Part of this meeting will be focused on the reorganization of the Select Board. Have all the selectmen elected yesterday taken their oaths?
Yes.
Very good. Are there any nominations for the position of Select Board Chair?
I'm going to nominate Hank Pelkey.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I'd just like to ask Hank if he's willing and if he wants the job.
Yeah, I'm willing.
Because you bowed down at one time and I don't want to push it under.
No.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Chair? If not, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Hank Pelkey serving as Select Board Chair, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I will abstain.
It's a four-nothing vote. Congratulations and condolences, Mr. Chairman. Are there any nominations for the position of Select Board Vice Chair?
I nominate Alicia Malley.
I can second that if you want.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Alicia Malley serving as Select Board Vice Chair, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay, it's four-nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations. They can't blame us if something happens. We didn't vote for ourselves.
And congratulations, by the way, to both Hank and Alicia for your reelections yesterday to the Board and for your election to these leadership positions.
Thank you.
And Hank, I'm bringing you the usual table with it. First item, of course, is a discussion of whether we need an executive session. I would propose two matters that could be discussed in executive session. One, possible discussion, if you'd like, on the relative merits of two applicants we have for the position of Planning Commission. And another matter would be a contractual matter, a review and/or approval of the assessor's proposed contract.
I'll make the motion. Nope. I'll second it.
The meeting is yours. You can ask about yays and nays, though, if you want, about amending the agenda, Hank.
I'm fine.
Okay?
Did we have a vote on the executive session?
That's where we're at that point now.
Yep. It's motion and it's seconded.
So...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Amend the agenda. Do we have any need for that this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one late-breaking liquor board application, which we could probably deal with tonight. It's a renewal for a first-class permit for a country house restaurant.
Motion to amend?
I move.
I'll move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The amended agenda is adopted. Appointment of a recording clerk?
Yes, we have Linda Drummond, who has served it for at least the 12 years I've been here, and she's willing to do so again, if that's your pleasure.
Need a motion? I saw moved that we put Linda in as the recording clerk.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Appointments of the official newspaper?
We have used the Brandon Reporter over the past few years.
I make a motion that we use the Pittsburgh Brandon Reporter, or Brandon Pittsburgh, whatever it is, as our official newspaper.
I second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Adoption of the Select Board meeting schedule, which we all have in our packet.
I move we adopt it.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Appointment of officials in various boards and commissions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll just point out that everybody has seen these posted around town. However, there's a couple of changes that would need to be made before you adopt these en masse. First, under the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the main representative is Dave Mills, with Dave Suya Sr. serving as the alternate. Second, I'm happy to serve as the representative to the Regional Transportation Council, leaving the vacancy for the alternate position.
Need a motion to adopt?
Need a motion to adopt.
We adopt it.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. That's it for that page, huh? Act on the Select Board meeting minutes of February 19th and a special Select Board meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2020. Do we have any changes, corrections, or additions to either one? Hearing none? Any questions on the orders?
I noticed there's a $1,400 expenditure for the Route 7 side rock design. Didn't we do something about our design once or twice before?
No, there's different design happening for different parts of Route 7. We've paid Otter Creek some money to design water and sewer work in anticipation of that reconstruction work. And we've also, in the past, paid Otter Creek to design some of the water system elements on Segment 1. This bill is for that village sidewalk restoration project that we were talking about recently. And the good news on that is that it's going to be a total engineering fee of just $2,000, which is relatively cheap, for what we hope will be a quick, dirty, cheap, inexpensive project. We're doing our best to keep costs down. So that's two-thirds progress payment on that. The design has been already set to V-Trans, but I'm sure they anticipate a little bit more work when V-Trans gets back on this main issue of traffic control. That'll be what they look at, I think, mostly.
Have we ever shopped around for a town report coordinator? That also is $1,400.
We have. We have. And I can probably research the last time we did so and tell you what the bids were. But I think it's been done probably every other year, because sometimes they do it in a two-year cycle. A two-year bid is cheaper than one year at a time. If you'd like, I can look back on the history of it.
Yeah, please.
Guess I've got some more sign-ins to go here, Hank.
Do you want to add any orders?
Oops, yes. The Lister Excel program, like, is that... Because we're using Vision, not NEMRIC, correct?
That's right.
And then, so what's... Is this like a... Is this separate from that? Is this just a different software that they're using?
I don't know is the answer, but I can look into that and let you know. Thank you. That's the Excel, I think, Excel program.
And that's probably what maybe they're using that then gets entered into Vision?
Well, it's a little confusing because the rest of the town, the Clerk's Office and the rest of us do use some of that NEMRIC accounting software that the Listers use. Instead of the Vision Assessment software, they use the Vision system.
Okay.
And I'll let you know about this Excel program.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I've got another one down here. Trying to hide it. This summer, the Markowski's are going to go from the bridge south.
Hopefully as early as April. I heard it was March, but I think GMP is behind schedule doing the prep work with the telephone lines and what have you. So last I heard was today, I think, saying maybe April, June.
And they're going to do from here to Brandon before they do the Village.
That's right.
Village is the last.
We're the last segment. We're Segment 2 in the Village. 3 and 4 go just north of town, and then 4 is the one up to Otter Valley.
One to an hour.
Yeah.
Whoever gets done will have to invite Peg Florrie back down, because 30 years ago, she said it was... The whole project was shovel-ready.
Fast track.
Yeah.
Fast is relative. Well, you're a turtle or a rabbit.
Town manager, you're for it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief recap of town meeting. All three budget articles passed by wide margins, and that's the General Fund, the Highway Fund, and the Village Fund. Voters voted overwhelmingly to abolish the Lister's office and to replace it with an assessor to be appointed by the Select Board. More on that later tonight. The voters approved the idea of periodically reviewing special appropriations, and so I'd be happy to work with the selectman Mills or anyone else who's interested in that topic about how we can roll this out next year. The Otter Valley Unified Meeting School budget passed. Again, congratulations to Hank and Alicia on their reelections. Congratulations also to Helen McKinley on her reelection as Clerk Treasurer. And in something of a surprise, congratulations go to Kevin Carvey, not Jim Carvey. Kevin Carvey was a write-in as the new town moderator, and I suspect Jim Carvey's aunt was involved with this. So I'm looking forward to the moment next year when we have Kevin receiving the town meeting gavel of his father. The health officer recruitment continues. We've had one expression of interest and an application, and I'm going to present that to the Select Board in a meeting or two, once I have a feeling that we're not going to see any more applications. As I said at the last meeting, and I will remind people, the Segment 1 reconstruction project having to do with Route 7, south of the mobile station, is seeing poles and holes preceding the reconstruction work, which, at latest information, will be taking place in earnest under Markowski excavating from April to November. And again, if anyone has concerns, questions, suggestions, you should reach out to the project outreach director Natalie Boyle, who's a contractor working for V-Trans, whose job it is to get out the best, most up-to-date information about the project. That notice has been posted on the town's Facebook page and on the town's website, so that's where you can find her contact information. The town has mailed out requests for bids for a truck, cab, and chassis to retailers around the area, with a bid deadline of Thursday, March 5. We will discuss the bids and review them at the March 18th Select Board meeting. The community issues team at Almia, Mr. Chairman, will be meeting next on Thursday, March 12th at 6:00. I'll be sure to inquire about the town's proposal to purchase land on which a new large substation might be built, and to let them know about our contacts with V-Trans about the Firehill Road Railroad crossing. I've already sent them the email, just to give them a heads-up as to what we've been asking in terms of state help. On Monday, March 9th, at 2:00, here in the town offices, the town manager will meet with the owner of Initial Ideas, which is the sports and engraving place in Rutland, here at the town office with its president, to discuss options for putting the names of Pittsburgh veterans on the marble slabs here in the hallway. So Hank and Ann Pelkey have been invited, as has Shelley from the library, so hopefully we'll get good ideas and come to an agreement as to how best we want to do that next phase of the project. Of course, any of the rest of you, if you'd like to attend, feel free to come and join the discussion. Finally, it's looking like I will be out of the office this Friday, and then again, from Thursday, March 19th to the 26th of March, returning on Friday, March 27. I will try to turn around my mail and get a packet out that Friday, but it may have to be done the following Monday, March 30th, just as an FYI. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments or questions for John? I don't see it down here, but I know we have... Select ones.
Oh, you're right. Because this is kind of a unicorn cut and paste, or I didn't add that to it.
Any comments on the Select Board?
I guess all I wanted to say was, in response to Joe's talking about the sidewalk at town meeting, we've got, what John told me today, we've got a little over $30,000 in the Village Fund, which is for sidewalks and different stuff like that. So between that and the matching that the state will do, I personally would certainly hope that would pretty much do this project. I can't believe it's going to be a whole lot more. And so I think with what you said, you were bringing up the 200,000, which was on 1,400 feet, which we've now got down to 700. I mean, there's just... I just wanted to be on record to clarify a little of that, so people maybe aren't quite as confused as they might have been.
Well, it's been an ongoing project for quite a while, and there have been many changes.
Oh, yeah. No, I...
Information that...
Yep.
From what it first started to what it is today has changed. It's been a hassle, let's say.
But I think people were under the wrong impression on town meeting night.
Yeah, it seemed like it was going to be a lot better this summer, when we, you know, when we walked it and then kind of came up with some numbers and really finalized that, the number had... We had gotten into it, it was pretty low.
And we wrote a really note until we go out to bid and see those numbers, but we have a much scaled back, much simpler basic project.
Yeah, because, I mean, essentially now, we're looking at... You cut the asphalt. We're digging the old asphalt out. We're not digging below it. Just taking the old asphalt off. You're going to lay a curb in. You're going to... A little gravel to bring it up and pave over the top, so...
And we may, Joe, we may have a few feet, maybe a couple hundred feet of old granite curbing.
Well, no, we've got...
So there's ways to try to economize.
Well, in that, if you wanted to use that by the town hall. Excuse me. The school gym or whatever it is now. But it's... To me, it's still our town hall. Put along there, put the granite in there, and, you know, it'll save us some money. And just try to, you know...
The comments that I made at town meeting, I believe I made it clear in the beginning that they were my feelings, and I wasn't trying to... I was not trying to speak for anybody else. And if anybody had wanted to speak up and defend, you know, there was no response to it, but I would just pass down. I've had over the last year or so, I've had quite a bit of conversation with different people, and that's partially what inspired me to...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
To speak my feelings on it. And that's what I only intended to do. And I had no intention of promoting or demoting anybody else's...
By the way, this is the perfect opportunity to thank everybody for their participation at town meeting. The budget's passed by wide margin, and I think a lot of the reason the highway budget passed by such a large margin was that you really reassure people with your talk about the Highway Department and what good projects we're doing.
And most everybody was respectful at the meeting, except for one or two.
Yep.
Nobody was really on line.
No, no. I had a conversation with a truck representative today, and... Because I'm in the process of going through a truck purchase myself, and he explained to me that he would be willing to come and talk to the Board, to give us information that maybe none of us are quite... I'm not an expert, and I've had quite a few trucks. But that he felt as though, from looking at the equipment we have, that some of the equipment we have was not always specked out in the most efficient way, that like, for example, it was... He mentioned one tandem there that was... Had a... Was the specs between the transmission and the molder and stuff were... It wasn't a good matchup. And something like that could save some money on purchasing. So I told him, I said, "Contact the road foreman or you."
That'd be helpful information to have.
And I said, "I don't want to be responsible for anything or take blame or credit. I'm not looking for it." But if it was agreeable, maybe he would come and their road foreman and just go with that. You've mentioned a few things that you had some interest in, why they were on the list, and...
Well, yeah. And I'm no expert, but I, again, like you...
Well, I'm no expert.
I got at least a little idea.
I have bought quite a few trucks, and I wore them out and killed them one way or another. But, you know, we might gain some good information, and we might be able to come up with even some better equipment, and who knows how the finances might turn out. Could be better.
No, that's a great idea.
I do know that Chad has touched base with a supplier or two, but there's always more that could be done, so we benefit from that.
Well, this is one that Chad had been talking with.
Okay. Is that Sandy?
Some Kenworth.
Yeah, okay, Kenworth, okay.
I don't want to promote anything here, but...
Anybody else?
Chip?
How about comments?
Very quiet out there.
This is what the camera pans to our audience.
Oh, old business.
I'm quiet over there.
I know, old business.
No comments.
On to new business. Re-adopt V-Trans Highway and Bridge standards.
Yeah, there's really three items in a row, Mr. Chairman, that all have to do with basically reapproving or reaffirming things that we do each year for the benefit of V-Trans, so they know that we are doing what we ought to do to keep water out of our... I'm sorry. Sediment, storm sediment, and salt and sand out of the lake. And that has to do with crowning our roads, ditching our roads, and budgeting appropriately for road maintenance. And that's why they produce several forms that they like the Select Boards around town to submit. One is an annual financial plan that simply... This must have been written in the 1850s, but it says that the municipality certify that funds raised by municipal taxes are equivalent to or greater than the sum of $300 per mile for Class 1, 2, and 3 roads. So I think we've got that covered.
I'm sure we do.
The next one is just a confirmation that we have adopted and follow the state's road and bridge standards, and we have done for years. We exceed them, in our view. And then the final is the Town Road and Bridge Standards Checklist, which we fill out with regards to Sections 1 through 7, because we already follow these practices. So it's basically just telling V-Trans, "We're good, responsible stewards of our road system, and we'd like their help when we submit grant applications."
Make a motion to adopt them all.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
This water quality business is only growing and getting a lot more involved for everybody. I mean, the roads, farmers, I mean, you know, Dave.
Loud earth.
It's a kind of a tough nut to crack.
Hopefully, there were three signature pages there.
Don't stop now, Joe.
No.
Get your stamp.
Yeah, we're going to have a stamp here one of these days.
You keep promising, but we never see one.
I am going to research that. Vermont legal cities and towns will say no, but I'll ask them.
I'm sure they're going to say no.
About what? Oh.
You just got...
You have to do it, just go.
They'd be able to read mine in.
Make a mark there that nobody would know what it was. Actually, I give Ken my son Hill once in a while. He's getting real professional. He always signs checks, and I think it's a little bit too professional. He signs most of them. I don't very often.
You just don't like the idea of him signing any checks.
Yeah. I made myself available. Maybe he wouldn't get to sign all of them.
Well, as long as he's putting the money in to cover them, it's...
Ain't come lock me up yet.
All right, next is consider proposal to rename or correct the name of Davidson Road, Fire Academy, Davidson.
Right. I think the road was intended to be Davison, named after Ray Davison. No second D there. And for some reason, the D's been added, I think maybe by Gordy Delong decades ago. And they'd like to fix it, just because I think they're putting some new signage up, and the request is to get your permission to do that.
Second.
For an oral, is that a road?
It's at the Fire Academy, one of the little access roads up there.
Very well-known.
We got a second?
Yep.
Further discussion?
So all we're doing is just changing the name. We're not... We don't have to furnish them with a sign or anything.
No, no.
So it's just legally changing. Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Next is consider... Review the results of the town meeting vote on Lister's office and consider the next steps.
Well, as you know, I think we've been working fairly well with our new part-time professional assessor, really since September she's been working. It seems like it's been a lot shorter than that, but she has been billing us at the agreed hourly rate, and now that we have abolished the Lister's office, we do need to take the official step of appointing her as the town's assessor. And as part of that, she has presented a contract which confirms her hourly rate and provides rough estimates of what she thinks her hours might be, although she agreed with me this morning when we talked that those are conservative numbers. In other words, they're probably on the high end. So we've talked about ways we can have Linda Trask, at her wage rate, do as much as possible of the fact-gathering work, so that she is doing less of that at that higher rate. But what we have really before us is to appoint the assessor.
Do I make a motion to appoint her as an assessor?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
We'll be the asset.
Joe, what about this?
There is a contract somewhere that...
Are we going to discuss that in the executive session?
Yeah, okay, we can...
Okay. I thought that's what you said.
Yeah. I said if you felt that we needed to.
Well, I think we'll just go over it a little bit.
Sure, sounds good. Sorry, Hank?
It's okay. Review the draft notice of the transfer station patrons reaffirming changes, charges to a garbage disposal. And you got a thing in our packet?
Yes, you remember Wayne coming in and talking to us about the latest trend, which is people trying to find loopholes in the rules.
300-gallon bags instead of 30, yeah.
Right. The 33-gallon bag has always been the standard, and that's always what we've listed in the town report. I suppose we could make that language even more explicit in the next town report, but for now, he'd like some confirmation from the Select Board that he can enforce the $2 per 33-gallon container policy, which we really have had in place for a long time.
Is it possible for him to have...
Yeah.
So when I do the notice, it'll say, "Per order of the Select Board," that's okay?
Is it possible for him to have on the side of the building... Is it possible for him to have, on the side of the building down there, a picture of different sized bags nailed up?
Well, I brought that up with him, and he said it doesn't work. Because I, what I suggested to him was a, a box, or a trash can, or whatever, you know, like they do in the airport, where you're, you're carry-on, and he's like, "It'll be just like the airport, they'll still bring a full size of case of air."
Trying to stuff it in.
Stuff it in, yeah, so, yeah, he didn't think...
We will also, we will also tighten it up in the town report, but we'll also, we'll also have handouts for him, so he knows that, again, as you've seen the handout, it's reaffirmed by the select board, so that should end that discussion.
It's too bad for him to have to get into an ugly discussion with somebody over a garbage bag.
Well, that's why he can blame it on us, because it'll say, "Per order of select board."
Yeah, so they can come here and bring their 55 gallon and dump it here.
I guess in public, then.
But we don't advise that, lady, ladies and gentlemen.
There's garbage police down there.
Yeah. Wait, Hank, can I?
Yeah.
While we're on garbage, can I, and I don't know if this is the place to bring this up, but we had that $9,000 that came back to us.
Yeah, that's right.
Are we going to discuss that at any point in time?
Feel free.
Because, I mean, what I was thinking in talking with Wayne here a few weeks ago, there's some repairs that are going to need to be made, and what I was thinking was taking a section of that and just setting it aside, so we would have it in place if we needed to do a repair, maybe half, you know, 5,000 set aside, and the other towards the roof.
Well, we've already talked about the idea in the next budget cycle to put something there for building maintenance, and the question is up to you as to how you want to move the money around. As I mentioned at town meeting, we've got $9,500 that we didn't expect, but we also have $14,500 that we didn't expect on the roof, so part of that kind of resolves itself. They both go into the general fund, or come out of the general fund, so you could say that we're looking at a $5,000 deficit now for the transfer station, and just call that a day and fund in the future. Or you can do some different accounting now, that's really up to the board. That's how I intended to do it, just leave it there.
She's asking for more money than if we do it the other way.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, is the transfer station costing us?
You're not setting it aside, because we've already spent...
Oh, we've already, no, 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 I understand, yeah.
Hold on, we have a question over here.
Generally speaking, we get so much for people bringing garbage down, and our cost of running the place, is it like 50%, we're running in the red, or 20%?
We definitely subsidize it substantially. We talked a while ago about giving it to a private entity to try to take it off the books, and that was shot down, and we've talked about raising rates, but that require, that sometimes results in people with self-help, you know?
And what the slid board agreed upon was to have a two-tiered system, we had to pay for the bags and bring them down, but we'd also have the taxpayers pick up part of the charges through their taxes, so that we'd catch the people that weren't using it in town. So it was structured to be probably paid by use, probably to be paid by taxes.
Yeah, and you could easily look at the town report and say, "What revenue do we take there, and what are the expenses there?" And we certainly spend more than we take in.
Oh, yeah. I sometimes wonder, are we doing as good or better, or maybe not so good as other towns around? Is there any way of comparing?
Brandon has a private condo.
Right, yeah. Dr. Isn't that part of their, they don't pay for...
Well, I'm sure it's rolled into their taxes.
So the tax, yeah.
We pay paribas for our taxes, and paribas for use, and the reason, we try to keep the, anybody who's got, if you don't, it's all along the edge of the road.
It's all over the road. Well, it is anyway, but it's just more.
But it's worse.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm happy if you want, Joe, I talk regularly, and I could do a quick email to the other town managers in the area, asking what kind of finances are they seeing with their transfer stations, I'd be happy to do that.
The league wouldn't be a place to ask for, I mean...
I suspect it'd be easier just to reach out to these other managers and ask them what their numbers are.
Be nice to know whether we're in line with everybody else, I got a feeling that everybody's running in the red a little.
Well, it's going to just get worse, because recycling is no longer the inexpensive option. No one's taking this material, and we're going to have to maybe at some point start paying to get rid of it.
There's some new garbage regulations for swirl garbage, so to speak, that's coming in here not too far away.
You're talking about composting?
Compost, right, so we're not even in line for that thing yet, I don't think.
We are, we have a container at the transfer station, as we are required by law to do, to give people the option, and haulers are going to have to make that available at some point, too, there's deadlines coming up.
Because that's just adds another problem to a problem.
Hank Pelkey will tell you that, on his frequent visits, he often uses the composting option down there.
We've heard Hank's, that way you're handling it, and it sounds real good, too.
Worked for me for almost 40 years. All right, appointments to fill, elected offices left unfilled, do we have any of those, John?
We do. Peter Cady has consented to once again serve as town agent, after I promised him that he would have to do absolutely nothing, which has been the case for years now, it's pretty symbolic.
He's done a great job at it.
What is he, a town agent?
Town, town agent. And then Rob Spensley, who is currently the grand juror, I've left him a message today, and hopefully I'll hear from him tomorrow, so that could be a future appointment. And on the next item, as I mentioned, there are two planning commission membership applicants in the packet who have submitted application letters. We have one vacancy, and of course, there's always the possibility of appointing an alternate. No, I don't know if you want to...
I think we should bring him in and interview him.
In what?
Interview him at the next meeting, we'll make a decision.
Well, we were talking, wasn't that an executive session, too?
We can, we can discuss, if you want to discuss individual personalities, that should be an executive session, but if you want to talk generically the process, I don't think it has to be an executive session.
Normally, bring somebody in to talk to them.
Bring my doctor.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm fine with that, I only know one of the two people that applied.
I don't know how everybody feels about it, but it seems to me like, for that position, if whoever is interested would come in and visit with us a little, it might be, might be helpful to them.
Yeah, I mean, it's fair to...
Well, yeah.
So let's put that one off, to the next meeting, and we'll get him in here.
Get him invited in, because one, Mark, Mark has been here, because he applied when we put, or not we, you, when you guys put Ted and Tom Markowski on.
Ted Gill, yes.
Was he an applicant?
He was an applicant then, so he's, he applied back then, so he's reapplying, so...
And would you like to do those interviews in executive session? I mean, that makes sense to me.
Probably would, yeah, it'd be good for them to talk.
Yeah, I'll invite them.
So John, when you find out about the other unfilled positions, we'll take, we'll do those at the next meeting also.
Yeah.
Do them all at once.
Do them all at once.
Good.
Thinking back, quite often, we have appointed different people to different jobs, and it never seemed to go very good, or never amounted to much, or, you know, over the years.
People do come and go, and especially when they're not paid a whole lot of money.
Yeah, well, I know, they're paid, that's not...
What it is, on the planning commission, it's nice to have an alternate there who is up to speed, like when I got done, Tom had been there for six months or a year, or whatever, so he could just move in. It makes it a lot nicer, you know, and I don't think anybody expected Ted to leave, so there was nobody in the, in the wings.
All right. Budget status, I'll be down.
Yeah, the general fund budget creeps along and grows slightly each time we sign orders, and so as of March 4th, after you've signed the orders tonight, general fund is at 73.4% of budget, which is about where it should be, because some of these expenses are not graduated throughout the year, but are front-loaded, like the special appropriations have been paid, so we're looking pretty good.
No big surprises.
No big surprises.
How are we doing on salt, we using more or less?
So, we are, we just did two orders at the last meeting, which takes us, I think, to the low 90s, when our budget has been 79. That's why, that's why we bulked it up this, this next time to 100.
I know, what was it last winter? I don't remember.
The last, I got report from Pat for like, the last five or six years, and the definite trend is, the last three years, we've been in the 90s, as opposed to the years before that, when we've been as low as 50, 70. So 79 was the number for a long time, it's just not adequate.
Now, is the price per ton gone up, or are we just using more?
It's gone up, but I think the answer is we're using more, because I think when you get so many variations with temperature, freeze thaw cycle, that's a real point, and a lot of these little annoying storms, too.
A good example, the other day, this one of these last storms, they had to go out and salt, and probably two hours later, the sun comes out, and boom.
Yeah.
But they needed to do it then, because they were glare ice on Sagoma, there was glare ice out here, an hour later.
Yeah.
So that's what's killing us, those type of things.
Yeah.
And I think he was holding off a comb, but then we got some making plays.
No, no, I know. And I talked with Chad, and I say, "Do what you can."
You got to do what you got to do.
"You got to do what you got to do."
You got to do what you got to do.
About the mountain services.
They've done a good job.
That's a problem.
To do it.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to reassess the slid board and convene the liquor board, and we have one item, and it's a...
First class liquor license renewal application.
Make the motion, we approve it.
Second.
Through the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Oh, yeah.
They don't behave themselves, the state don't step in and take over anywhere.
He thought he signed us earlier.
He's signed, oh, you did sign the code.
I thought I did.
Then I didn't get regular.
If our secretary paid attention, what's going on?
Oh, stop.
That was my chance, that was my chance.
You know, you know what we're going to do, we're going to move your little table right over next to him.
Well, you know what?
We're going to give you a yardstick.
Well, they didn't give it to me.
It's regular select board that didn't get signed.
Nobody signed it?
You've had my...
Signed liquor board.
Too, apologies.
Hey, I get to sign first this time.
My mistake.
I have to take all back those bad things, huh?
Yeah.
Dang it.
Oh, shoot.
What did you do?
Caught yourself on one.
Put it in the, I, she wasn't even looking, I'm in the disapproved section, I got to...
Oh, shit.
Look at that, all fixed.
Again, my steak much from the other side.
I know.
You will pay.
You'll pay the price.
Those things don't have a lot of room to sign to begin with, so I just...
It's great for me, because I write so small.
That's a huge, huge signature.
I can write small, I can write big, I fit whatever, whatever I have, I mean, it's just there.
It'd be inflexible.
Yes.
All right, we'll get out of the liquor board and go into, back into the slid board, and I think that's the, all the business we have in this evening.
All right.
For the executive session.
You're going to thank everybody for coming?